December 9. This is our last meeting of the year. First roll call, Melissa.
Council President Corp.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fentcher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle.
Here.
And Councilmember Trautner.
Here.
Thank you, Melissa. Next up, agenda approvals. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion, please?
Can I move to it, so that it's written?
Second, motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have approval of minutes for November 18, 2025. We have a motion, please.
So move.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have payment of bills, and we usually receive those in our email. So maybe have a motion, please.
So move.
Second, motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Michelle here for our October 2025 financial report. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council Michelle Ferguson, the Finance Department, presenting the October 2025 monthly financial report. So starting off, we're gonna look at sales tax again. I know that we talk about this every month when I present, but it does make up a quarter of the revenues in the general fund, so it is what we're talking about. The revenues continue to come in strong. When comparing sales tax revenues from 2024 to 2025, at the same time, revenues are only down by $53,000 in the general fund. And the estimated revenues for sales tax are expected to come in about $1 million over budget. So here's kind of a different visual, and these are, this is breaking up the sales tax into the quarters for '23, '24, and '25 into the categories that they break out sales tax, the NICS codes that they break them out into. So construction, food services, and drinking places, manufacturing and wholesaling, retailing, and then other. So when you take a look at this, you can see that construction kind of bounces around between Quarter 1 of 2023 through this Quarter 3 of 2025, but it's been pretty steady in this, in 2025. Food services and drinking, that's remained steady. Manufacturing, wholesaling, you can see that that one has had a lot of shifts over the last almost three years' time, but this last quarter, it's kind of seemed to have gotten back into an average place, which is great. And then if you take a look at retailing, Quarter 3, that last one, that's at $3.1 million, that's the highest it's been in the last three years. So not sure if that's an anomaly, a timing thing, or if that is a trend to come, and we can expect to see sales tax continue to come in high in that category. On this side, other taxes, and that's gonna be made up of BNO taxes, admissions tax, and gambling tax. And these revenues continue to come in about $3 million higher than they were at the same time last year, and that is because of a scheduled increase for the BNO revenues as well as the changes to the max cap on the BNO taxes. But there is also an increase of $200,000 related to the admissions tax, and that is because the Showware Center had not been charging admissions tax on all of the other fees, and so they had some back revenues that they had to catch up on. So for the rest of the report, kind of looking at variances from this time last year to now, and kind of pointing out some of those differences. So licenses and permits and charges for services continue to come in a little bit lower than anticipated and lower than last year at the same time. So they're both are anticipated to come in under budget, but there are revenues that came in higher in the other categories that will more than cover for those decreases. Under expenditures, firing contracted services, that's just highlighted because the percentage of budget is very high. It's at 98.4, but those are mostly billed quarterly, so we've already paid most of those expenditures through the end of the year, so there shouldn't be too many more expenditures, and it's not anticipated to go over budget. And then just to point out that the transfers in on the revenues and the non-departmental expenditures have very high variances, and that is due to the transfers in and transfer out of ARPA revenues in '23 and '24. And it might be a little hard to see, but there are highlighted in kind of a yellowy-orange color on a number of these different funds, and those are just kind of pointing out the higher variances that, just to provide a little bit of clarity on. So for the street fund, the expenditures have a higher variance from '24 to '25, and that is just a timing issue for the transfers out. And then for left one, revenues, again, still more of a timing issue. You can see that '23 and '24 kind of align. And then for the lodging tax, revenues and expenditures are down this year, and we're not quite sure if that is a, trend is gonna continue, but it is seeing about a 10% to 15% reduction in revenues. And then on the capital resources fund, expenditures are lower than they were in '23 and '24, and that is because we had a larger number of capital projects that were funded out of the Capital Resources Fund during that budget cycle. And then the Human Services Fund, there is a very large variance, and that is because the transfers out to the various projects were done a little bit earlier this where, this year. And same with the Showware Operating Fund, transfers in, just to keep their cash flow positive, was done a little bit earlier. And on this slide, up at the top, the Debt Service Fund was highlighted just because it has a negative variance, and that's just because some debt was paid off at the end of 2024, so we didn't have to incur those expenditures this year. And then the Water Fund, they had some extra capital projects that they were working on, so more transfers out were done this year. And the Solid Waste Utility Fund, revenues are higher, and that is because of the liquidated damages that Republic has paid to the city for the trucks on the road and then the garbage issue that we had earlier this summer. And then on this last slide, the expenditures for the Facilities Funds were lower in 2024, and again, that was a timing issue for the transfers out. And then the Unemployment Fund, expenditures are higher this year. We had a lot of claims in the first and second quarter of 2025. Those have leveled off, and the Q3 and Q4 expenditures are back to their normal area. And then workers' comp, the revenues are higher, and that was budgeted on purpose that way. We have to keep a certain amount in fund balance, and so we needed a little bit of extra revenues transferred in from the other funds to make sure that we make that minimum fund balance. And then I talked about it last month, the expenditures for the health claim, health claims in the Employee Health and Wellness Fund are higher, they were higher from January through August of this year, but have since leveled off, and we're not seeing such a spike in those expenses anymore. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Councilwoman Trautner.
Thank you, Madam President. Michelle, let me go back and clarify, when you were talking about Showware.
Oh.
What exactly?
The admissions tax. So there was a change to the admissions tax, so it's taxed on all the fees, and they were only charging the admissions tax on just the ticket sales, not on the rest of the fees. And so they had to go do a look back and see how much they weren't charging of the admissions tax and then pay it to the city.
Okay, so that's been corrected as far as moving forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Michelle? All right, thank you so much, Michelle. All right, next up, we have Q3 2025 Investment Report, and we have Joe Bartlamie. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Joe Bartlamie. I'm the Cash and Investment Officer in the Finance Department, and I'm presenting the third quarter investment report. And this report was presented to the Investment Advisory Board on November 20. So at the end of the third quarter 2025, we had cash in the bank earning a 4.5% earnings credit, and that helps offset our banking fees, and a cash balance of $6.3 million in the bank. Our short-term portfolio with the Washington State Local Government Investment Pool, we were earning 4.292% yield, and that has an overnight maturity. We're able to transfer in and out of that fund as we need to, and a balance of $112.4 million. And our long-term portfolio with average yields of 3.6%, average maturity of 835 days, market value of $261.4 million, and an investment total of $260 million. And then the pie chart below shows of that portfolio, total cash and investment portfolio, really a significant portion, almost about half, is in the U.S. Treasuries, and also a significant portion in the local government investment pool, about just more than a quarter. And next, we have our five-quarter flow of cash and investments by type. So cash at the very bottom in the green, we keep just enough to cover our short-term cash flow needs in our checking account. And then that pink line is the local government investment pool. Like I mentioned, we can transfer money to and from that account as we have excess or we need cash to cover current expenses. Then our long-term portfolio really stays very even throughout the year unless we add to that portfolio. And then total cash and investments at the top. And here we have a three-year flow of total cash and investments. So this is cash investment pool and long-term investments combined. So 2023, we had a year-over-year increase. That's that blue line at the lower line. 2024, in the green line, we had really an ending balance very close to the ending balance of the prior year. We did have that large expenditure for the ASB Building, Administrative Services Building, at the end of 2024. And then 2025, in the purple line there, is tracking just below 2024, and we've really had some continued large expenses throughout this year, especially for the Keyhawk Building and spending down the ARPA funds. And interest earnings over five quarters, they've really continued to be very strong throughout 2025. The, both the short-term and long-term portfolios right now are performing really well under the current market conditions. Next, we have total cash and investments by fund. So the total portfolio, this is the portion that belongs to each of the funds that we have throughout the city, so a significant portion in the general fund, as well as the various capital and utility funds and insurance funds. Next, we have our long-term portfolio only, so this does not include cash or the local government investment pool. Again, the pie chart shows of that long-term portfolio, almost three-quarters of that portfolio is in the U.S. Treasuries, that real stable investment. Bar chart below shows the laddered maturities, so we have constant maturities throughout the year and over the course of up to five years, and that really allows us a lot of flexibility. We're able to access our cash if we need it, or reinvest our cash if we have excess. This slide demonstrates policy compliance, so all of our various investment types are well within our investment policy. And lastly, we have our sector allocation review over four quarters. Really, there's not a lot of significant changes, but there is an increase to U.S. Treasuries and an increase to corporate bonds throughout the course of the year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Joe? All right, well, thank you so much for this presentation, Joe. It's always good to see you, and I want to say thanks to you and Michelle for your continuous hard work and all the information you provide to the council. So since it's been the last council meeting of the year, I just want to thank you both, and I appreciate everything you do. All right, next up, we have ordinance consolidating budget adjustments. Looks like we have Michelle up here.
Yeah, there you go. All right, Michelle Ferguson, and I'll be presenting the consolidating budget adjustment for July 1, 2025 through November 30, 2025. It's a big one, so it's $30 million, so I will try to get through this as painlessly as possible. So the overall increase to the budget is $30,657,300. Previously approved by council is an increase of $11,846,570. And pending approval by council is an increase of $18,810,730. As always, the majority of this presentation, I'll be using rounded numbers, but the exact numbers are in the ordinance and exhibits. So of the 11.85 million in the expenditures that council has previously approved, 4.55 million are for grants. There were two grants for the Northeast Hill Community Park Project that council approved. $970,000 grant from the Washington Department of Conservation was approved by council in November of 2023, and an $800,000 grant from the King County that was approved by council in 2024. There is a $939,000 grant for the Uplands Property Acquisition from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office that was approved by council in October. Also, a $519,000 grant from the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. A $417,000 grant for energy audits from the Association of Washington Cities that was approved by council in April. A $375,000 grant from the Puget Sound Regional Council for the Earthworks Park to Downtown Connection Project that was approved by council in February. And a $200,000 grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for DUI prevention. And then there are also $329,000 in other grants for smaller amounts that include $79,000 from the Washington Office of Public Defense, $78,000 from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for traffic safety enhancements, $72,000 from the King County for culture, $60,000 from, $60,000 from the King County Flood Control, and $30,000 from the Public Hospital District for Northwest Hightower Prevention and Treatment Initiative. So the other budgets that council has also approved total $7.3 million, and they include $2.89 million for the Milwaukee Levy Project, and that's gonna be $1.44 million that's gonna be transferred out of the Parks Capital Fund, and then $1.44 million budgeted in the project. There is also $2.59 million for the Data Now Replacement Project. $1.29 million will be transferred from the utility funds, and then $1.29 million will be budgeted in the project, and this was approved by council in October. There is also $1.28 million in carryforward budgets, which includes $700,000 for the Showware Operating Fund and $583,000 for the Human Services Fund for the Salvation Army Grant Expenditures and the Kent Youth and Family Service Expenditures. And then in February, council also approved a $600,000 budget for the 2025 through 2029 City Art Plan. And then there's a negative $62,000 to Truro Community Development Block Grant Project budgets. So the adjustments that are pending approval by council total $18,810,000. So that includes a budget change of $8 million that is needed to use the Transportation Impact Fee Funds. And so $4 million will be transferred from the Street Fund, and then $4 million will be budgeted in the 116th and 248th Roundabout Projects. And then an overall budget change of $4.81 million is needed to move revenues that have been accumulating in the LID funds into various projects. And then a budget of $2.83 million is needed in order to fully budget the Kent East Hill Operations Center. $1.4 million will be transferred from the Capital Resources and Utility Funds, and then $1.4 million will be budgeted in the project. A budget change of $2.1 million is needed for the insurance funds. That will be $2 million from the Health and Wellness Fund Balance to budget to be used for the increased claims cost for healthcare, and then $100,000 from fund balance for the Unemployment Fund to be used for insurance claim increases cost as well. And then a budget change of $1.5 million is needed to use accumulated interest income revenue in the Parks Capital Project Fund. $750,000 will be transferred from the Parks Capital Project Fund, and then $750,000 will be used in the unallocated Parks Capital Project. And then a budget change of $846,000 is needed to increase the salaries and benefits budgets related to the changes made to the Police Teamsters Union Contract that was approved by council earlier this year. A $408,000 budget increase to use the King County Levy Funds for the Milwaukee Levy Estridge Park renovation and Town Square Plaza projects. A $130,000 increase for the Solid Waste Fund revenues that were received from Republic for the liquidated damages. $100,000 to use the EFCRO revenues from the ASB Building purchase. $100,000 to use the Gulf Interest Income revenues, and $75,000 for the increase in public defense budgets. $37,000 for the use of the fee in LOO Funds for parks. And then there are $2.399... And then there are $2.39 million in decreased budgets to true-up projects. So this is going to be $1.3 million decrease to the Kent Memorial Park Project and the Ruth Property Acquisition. $779,000 decrease to the Willis Street Road Diet and the Meeker Street Kent Elementary Projects due to the cancellation of the projects. And a $235,000 decrease to the Sound Transit Operation and Maintenance Facility Project due to the reallocation of the project by Sound Transit. And a $77,000 decrease to the Commute Trip Reduction Project due to unspent funds due to a vacant position.
I'm Julie Perescondola. I'm the Kent Parks Director, and I'm here to celebrate the grand reopening of the Kent Community Center. So excited to be here at the Kent Commons today for the grand reopening. So for the last year and a half, we have been doing a refresh on a portion of the building. And we are so excited. Brand-new entryway, new windows have been added, some new details, some art. It is fantastic to see this building that has been the staple of our community, Kent's only community center for 47 years. Get a little bit of love, the love that it deserves, because we know the community loves it. Several years ago, we started remodeling this facility in different phases. So our first phase, we actually remodeled the Kent Commons Gym. So if you come out, you get to see a brand-new gym that's got really great activities happening. We put a new divider in, so we can actually put activities and programs on each side of the gym. On the second phase of the remodel, we actually focused on the north side of the building, which is more that customer service entry side. So that's the place that you'd come here and do your picnic shelter rentals, register for programs, check in for classes or for the gym. So it's a...
Go ahead and make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4532, consolidating budget adjustments made between July 1, 2025, and November 30, 2025, reflecting an overall budget increase of $30,657,300.
A second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Michelle. All right. Next up, we have, I believe, Parks. Councilmember Michelle.
Council President.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. ECD, yes. Councilwoman Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. So we have one item tonight. It is ordinance amending Chapter 6.02 of the Kent City Code, Infrastructure Improvements Exemptions. And we have Matthew Chastain presenting. And just quickly, I want to remind my peers that this was, we had a presentation on this at our last meeting, and I want to thank everybody for their patience. Councilmember Michelle and I had some additional questions that we have since sat down and had discussions with staff. So I just appreciate you guys allowing us to move the motion on this out a month so that we could get some additional insights. I think we end up with better policy and feel better about our decisions when we can do that. So, thank you. And Matthew.
Hello again, everyone. My name is Matthew. I am a current planner in the city's planning department. I am here to follow up on the discussion from the last meeting that we had regarding our small-scale infill development proposal, as well as to go over updates based on that Today, I want to recap a few of the objectives. I know tonight you're going to be voting, so I just want to make sure that we kind of touched on what we talked about last time and then go into those changes. Basically, in preparation, I want to recap on the policy objectives and goals of the code, and then I wanted to focus on the questions and concerns that you all had from the prior committee meeting. When we were adopting the comp plan and middle housing, we received clear direction and established policies to create homeownership opportunities, retain existing housing, and promote smaller-scale development. This proposed ordinance to no longer require infrastructure improvements for development projects consisting of four or fewer residential units per lot is helping to achieve all of those three by reducing the development costs when the city does not have plans for other infrastructure in the area. We have found that small-scale infill projects are less able to shoulder the costs of development, whereas the larger projects can spread that cost over a greater number of residential units. An unintended mismatch in our policies essentially incentivizes these potentially smaller infill projects to develop with much more density so that they can absorb those costs. This means that there is the high probability of losing an existing home and that the overall development itself will be more expensive. As you can see here, based on over 15 years of data, we found that although these smaller projects already put in the time and money to make it to that preliminary permit phase, roughly 68% of them do not make it to completion. Basically, our goal here is twofold. We want to support successful permit applications through the development phase, and then we also want to prioritize small-scale infill development. As we had touched on at the last meeting, there are certain types of streets and pedestrian areas that we collectively recognize as still needing those infrastructure improvements. So basically, all the projects that are located on those streets will not be exempt from implementing those infrastructure items. These are when development sites abut a roadway shown on the most current version of the city's six-year transportation improvement plan, or when the development site abuts a roadway classified as either an existing or future principal arterial, minor arterial, or the major collector. During the prior committee of the whole meeting, council had raised the concept of requiring minor collectors to also require those infrastructure improvements. We followed up on that with some analysis to compare the minor collectors and see kind of where the sidewalks already existed in the city. And so what you can see here is basically the green-lined segments that are on those kind of pink lines, which are the minor collectors. Those show that 66% of the minor collectors in the NR2 Zone, NRL, and the NRS Zone all incorporate at least half or full street sidewalks. Basically, if minor collectors were to be included in those streets that still require the improvements, new development projects on streets with those existing sidewalks would have to go through a deviation process to exempt them from those requirements as those improvements already existed. This would equate to additional time and money spent by the applicant. Instead of requiring that two-thirds of those potential developments on the minor collectors go through an added process, we suggest that we retain the director's discretion to require improvements, which can be used in instances such as closing those sidewalk gaps between properties. Essentially, if we establish a mandate across all lots located on the minor collectors, we create more process and costs for deviations, and then compared to allowing the director to mandate it on a case-by-case basis. Looking back at the last committee of the whole meeting, there were four primary concerns that we heard from you all. One of those concerns was not including more streets, specifically those minor collectors in the list of those requiring the infrastructure improvements, which we just touched on. There were also the concern of this affecting how we apply safe routes to schools. Safe routes to schools are still required to be reviewed for all subdivisions, so this ordinance update will not affect that requirement whatsoever. Another concern was regarding the actual improvement costs associated with infrastructure improvements. As infrastructure improvements combine many elements like sidewalks, curb cuts, drainage improvements, additional street paving, basically all these kind of items that have to be incorporated in tandem, the costs are drastically higher than if basically someone wanted to say, "Put down some concrete for like a new patio." Basically, this development makes it so those right-of-way improvements need to be engineered to a much higher standard, which equate to a higher cost for the individuals that want to have the housing. Another primary concern were the street trees. Specifically, the lack of them being incorporated, infrastructure improvements are not required. Because of this concern, we updated the proposed ordinance to incorporate a requirement for the equivalent number of street trees that would have been required to be implemented on-site and outside of the right-of-way for all these developments that would not require infrastructure improvements. Basically, this limits the city's responsibility to maintain those sporadic tree plantings that could be near or in a right-of-way, and then it also results in down the road, possibly, doubling the plantings if infrastructure would later be required for bigger projects that came through that had to do those actual infrastructure improvements. Basically, on top of the right-of-way dedication that would be required, we also included a no protest agreement that requirement that even when something like trees are added to the site or other improvements might be required by the director, if and when those future improvements are needed through the creation of a future infrastructure district, the property will still need to meet those infrastructure requirements at the time. So basically, let's say somebody had put a tree on their property down the road, few years, five years, whatever. There is the creation of that future infrastructure district. They require updates, and they require the street trees. That individual cannot say that they're exempt from adding one because they had prior added one to the lot in place of that infrastructure improvement. But yeah, that concludes this presentation on the updates to this proposal, and thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Matthew? Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Matthew and Kristin, I want to thank you so much for taking the extra time on this and incorporating our thoughts and concerns into this modified ordinance. I really appreciate you doing that, as well as Kurt and Chad as well. Thank you.
If there's...
I was just going to add that I appreciate the extra work on the trees, the street trees. Thank you very much.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. And I just actually, I did have one clarifying question. So I want to make sure. So within the code language, we do have that statement about the director's discretion?
Yes.
Tie together those small pieces like you and I talked about. Okay. Great. So if there's no other questions, I will read the motion. So I move to adopt ordinance number 4530, amending Chapter 6.02 of the Kent City Code by adding infrastructure improvements, improvement exemptions to facilitate small-scale infill development. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Finding none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. And we have Parks. Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you so much, Council President. We have two grants to accept tonight for Uplands Spray Park. And we have Carrie O'Connor here to present them.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Carrie O'Connor, park planner. I'm going to present these one at a time. If you have any questions, please let me know. The Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, Uplands Spray Park and Playfield. I just want to point out where this is again, the beautiful green patch. So we applied in 2024 for this grant cycle. We were awarded two grants. However, when they come through, they come through as one single contract. But I wanted to point out that there are two of them. So one of them was for $500,000. That's a local parks grant. And then we got one for $3,148,247 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a partnership of RCO and the National Park Service. And I would like you to know that we were the only award in Washington State. And the grant will assist with park construction.
Well, great work. That's amazing. Any questions for Carrie? Councilmember Fincher?
Hey, I don't know if you know this one. It's tied, but not exactly. Will both backstops be removed, or will one stay?
In the current plans, they are both being removed.
Any other questions for Carrie? Go ahead, Council President.
Not a question, but a comment. Congratulations, Carrie and whole team, on this two amazing grants. I mean, that's a lot of money coming back to our community so we can work on improvements of this park. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I will read the motion. I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $3,648 and $247 from the State Recreation and Conservation Office for the Uplands Playfield and Spray Park Project to amend the budget and authorize expenditure of the grant funds, and to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
I'll go on to the next one, which is the King County Parks Levy Grant for the same project area. We applied for this one this year in 2025. Again, this one is for $1 million, going to park construction. Sorry. And this will help create most of, a lot of the budget for this really cool park that's coming.
Okay. Great work. Any other questions about this one? Okay. All right. I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $1 million from King County Parks for the Uplands Playfield and Spray Park Project to amend the budget and authorize expenditure of the grant funds, and to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you so much, Carrie.
You too, very much.
Great work.
All right. Thank you.
Back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. And next up, we have public safety. Councilmember Chotner.
Thank you, President. Council President. We have two items on the agenda. Both require council action. The first is for renewing telestaff stuff for us. So James Endicott.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. James Endicott, Deputy Director for IT Department. Today, I'm here to get authorization to make purchases from UKG Chronos Solutions via the Omnia Partners Public Sector Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. The existing telestaff contract has expired, and the piece that we're addressing today is that the contract that I was originally using has also expired, and so we're bringing this forward simply a renewal. But we're also getting approval to leverage the new cooperative purchasing agreement. The renewal today is $34,613 for a one-year contract for the telestaff solution for the police department. Simply, this is what they use to manage their scheduling and time entry. With that, any questions?
Questions for anyone? Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you. So they can't use Workday?
No, it's a great question. They can't, mainly because of the complexity of the time entry, because of the way that they're paid coworkers. It's not like Workday, which is very flat. This is very complicated, so they have to have a special tool, and that's where telestaff comes in.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? All right. I will read the motion. I move to authorize the IT Director to renew the city's subscription to telestaff made available through UKG Chronos Solutions LLC under a cooperative purchasing agreement with Omnia Partners Public Sector Incorporated, and to authorize future renewals and other purchases through that agreement if those renewals and purchases are made within the city's established budgets and during the term of the cooperative purchasing agreement.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And then next up, we have an ordinance amending King County Code 9.45.040 for the stay-out-of-drug area and to add a new zone. So I'm going to welcome Commander O'Reilly.
And I'm sorry, Kent City Code, not Trump County Code. Hello there. Good evening, and appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to provide an update on it. We're at the six-month mark since the soda order went into place. But to kick it off about some current news, we participated, the Community Services Unit, our Neighborhood Response Team and Community Education Team, participated in the Battle of the Badges Holiday Event on Saturday, yeah, Saturday. And this year, Kent Police Department's theme was the Merry Minions, and we won first prize for having the most, the best event at the joint. So I think there was like 30 different agencies there. So that was a pretty neat thing, and that'll be on Facebook and stuff. So check it out. So just to kind of kick things off, to go back to how our different soda zones were identified, it was data-driven. And when we refer to problem incidents, it's these types of calls for service that we would go to. And this helped us utilize the data to identify the areas that were ultimately selected. So drug crimes, overdoses, trespass, shoplifts, welfare checks. Since May of this year, judges have issued 119 orders. So in 112 instances, the judge selected all three zones for a person receiving a soda order to stay out of all three zones. Five times, they selected just two, and on two instances, they selected just one. So if you remember correctly, when a soda order is issued, even if all three zones are selected, let's say a person says, "Well, jeez, I go to..." My doctor is in Zone 1. My dentist is in Zone 2. dentist is in Zone Two, and I actually live and work in another zone. So they can utilize exceptions for that. And so prior to making an arrest, an officer will review that, just like they would with any no-contact order and things like that, in similar fashion. So there were 35 order violations that were, that occurred. We had eight in Zone One. We had 26 in the Zone Two. That's our downtown area. And then Zone Three, we only had one soda order violation. So just to refresher, Zone One is essentially your 64th and Meeker area, goes from 167 down to Russell Road, and then Smith Street to essentially Kent Des Moines Road. And this is our data that we've seen since May to October. So we used the data from May to October last year, in 2024, and compared it to May to October this year. You'll see in Zone One, we had a decrease in drugs, overdoses, and unwanted subjects, and welfare checks. It's not surprising that we had an increase in proactive activity once officers became aware that this is now officially a soda zone. There, it's, it's selected for a reason because of the data. So there was an increase in proactive activity in subject stops, trespasses, and suspicious vehicle contacts. And as you can see, there's a trending down here. Our problem incidents trended down about 23% in the problem areas and overall 20% in all incident totals. Soda Zone Two, absolutely the most busiest one. Smith to 259th Street, north to south. And then east to west is Central to Third. We saw a decrease again in drugs, unwanted subjects, suspicious circumstances, overdoses, and vehicle thefts. We had an increase in extra patrol, subject stops, trespasses, welfare checks. This has obviously driven up our problem incident total. When we go into those areas, and we're going to encounter more if the business is good, and there's a lot of that business going on right now. Welfare checks increased 278%, which we think is probably connected to increased patrols, educating the public. We routinely meet with Kent Downtown Partnership, and we encourage people to call 911. You know, you think about the situations when you see somebody passed out or bent over at the waist and things like that. Those are things that we're really encouraging people to call 911 for. A reminder that this is the area that had the most soda order violations by far in comparison to the others. So you can see, so the top line is the total incidents, and then the bottom line is our, what we consider our problem incidents. You can see it increases up, but it's kind of flattened out a little bit towards the end, but it's still, there was an increase in this area, so the work continues. Soda Zone Three, this would be up on the East Hill, 236 to 244th, 100th Avenue Southeast to 112th. You'll see a marked decrease in this area. We had a decrease in incidents across the board, notably drugs are down 92%, overdoses are down 75%, and unwanted subjects are down 73%. All incidents are down 43%, with the noted problem incident total down 59%. It's trending in the right direction so far. This is one we're looking at for a proposal. We're calling it Soda Zone Four, Proposed Soda Zone Four. This is up where the Light Rail and Thea Bowman Apartment Complex, or Living Complex is at, up by Lowe's. The new Light Rail is going to be up there, right across the street from the college there. It's going to go from Interstate Five to the west border of Kent. That's why on the left side, or the west side, it's a little jaggedy, because that's the exact border. And then from Kent Des Moines Road down to South 244th Street, so a couple blocks just south of Dick's Drive-In. That's what we're looking at. What we know and what we think, we've seen a steady increase in all of the incidents and the problem incidents. Their trend lines fairly similar. We also believe that there's a need for safety and crime deterrence at the new Link Light Rail Station. What's different, there's two that we're going to have in Kent, right? But this is in a very populated area where we're already seeing drug and these types of problems occurring. And so we want to make it safe, and we want to encourage the public to utilize this, this new tool for transportation. The last thing we want is people to feel, be afraid to come and use this, use this great tool. Also, Zone Four, the noted problem incident totals have increased 77%, some of which are quite significant. We've done a lot of work, proactive work in this area. You can see extra patrols. There weren't many in 2024 from May to October, up to 144. That's up 4,700%. I mean, pretty much everything in red up there. There's, there's work to be done, and business is pretty busy up there so far. There's a couple other areas that we're just keeping an eye on at this point, and based off of what we're hearing from our officers, they're noting a new congregating spot up on the East Hill. It's the former Sherman Williams G.I. Joe's parking lot. We suspect and will work to continue to confirm that the uptick in this area is a result of the decrease in Zone Four. We think that could possibly be. People are looking in for a new area. That's also in the same area that we had Phoenix Court Apartments, which a significant amount of work went into working with them and them cleaning up that place, or a lot of work on their part, so, and us. But there's been a mix of increases and decreases, so we're just keeping an eye on it at this point. It's got a slightly decreasing trend line, but the officers are noting that, and so we wanted to make note of that. We're also keeping an eye on an area north, on the north side of Zone One. That's the 64th and Meeker area. Last year, in November to March of this year, we noted a spike in some of those problem incidents that led to proactive patrols already in the area. And then May to October, I've had a lot of officers talk to me about observing subjects routinely congregating north of Zone One to avoid the soda zone line. And we've just noted some activity in this area, and so we're keeping an eye on it for now. And so work continues. Like I said, it's just the first six months of Soda Zone being in effect, and so that's one of the ones we're looking at as well. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Councilmember Corr, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Thank you, Commander O'Reilly. This is great. I think, I mean, I understand, you know, why we're doing it, and I get it, but I think we're, do we have, I guess, what we need to probably, in the future, look at is maybe a root cause, trying to, just what we're doing is moving the problem out of the areas and not really solving it. So we might have to look at trying to solve this regionally, instead of, you know, just, this is a good tool to clean up temporarily, but I think we need to look at resources or what can be done here to actually get more, you know, services out or something. I'm really not sure. So it's, it's a conversation we need to have, and maybe something we need to dig into. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, how you doing, Commander O'Reilly?
Well, sir, thank you.
Good. You know, there's not too many things that men you disagree on. As a matter of fact, up to this date, none. But up on Pec Highway, there's, and plan to put a methadone suboxin clinic there. And we talking about in the areas of Zone Four. How are we going to help these people get treatment if they can't come to receive their their suboxin and methadone?
Great, great question. And then just getting back to the, the actual issuance of a soda order when they're in the court, a person who, who is going to potentially receiving or is already receiving care there, all they need to do is make note of that in open court, and then they can work through that. And I see Prosecutor Watson here. She's, she could probably answer that.
Okay, I got a question, though. The facilities hasn't, haven't been opened yet. We're in the process of opening right now.
Right. Right, yep.
Sorry, thank you, Commander. Sarah Watson, Chief Prosecutor for the city. I can tell you that the way that the ordinance is written is that the court can exempt certain areas out of the soda zone. So the judge can say to the defendant, you're going to be allowed to continue to receive treatment if you're already receiving treatment within the zone. The defendant will have to bring the court some sort of evidence to say that they, they have legitimate business, so to speak, in that area. But the ordinance allows the court to exempt for, if they live in the area, if they receive services in the area, or if they are employed in the area. And I can tell you that that exemption has already been used. I ran some numbers before this meeting. In 4% of our pre-trial orders, the court is making those types of exceptions, and they're doing the same thing at a rate of about 12% in the post-conviction status. So court's aware of that, and they're using it.
Okay. Also, too, okay, we're adding a Zone Four. Has it, have we ever gotten to a point, or are we thinking about getting to a point when we remove a zone? I mean, because you talked about Zone Three, where the activities have actually decreased. So we could be using manpower someplace else?
Well, if I can, I'll speak to it a little bit. I mean, we've, we've seen a challenge to these ordinances already. It was challenged on the basis of a constitutional right to travel. And what our, our court has already basically said, that we have the data to support these types of restrictions on a person's right to travel. And so they denied the defense's motion and have upheld our statute. At some point, if the data doesn't support the area, then that could, we could be seeing a different result in the court. But right now, the data still supports areas for all the zones that we currently have and the one being proposed.
Okay, and that's the reason why I bring this up, not just only for the West Hill, but also in the Valley, the King County Library in Kent. I noticed there's sometimes, like Tuesday and Wednesday, that people come there to get fed. I was wondering, I mean, would they have to get a exemption to come there to get fed, even if there are on drugs or alcohol or, you know?
I can actually speak to a couple of things on that. So we routinely meet with the library, and the chief and Assistant Chief Hammond and I met with a group of leadership regionally, and then the management at that library. And that's a big bone of contention for them right now, is having service providers or churches who, who have good intentions of getting people food in the public, but there's a lot of littering, and it brings a lot of other issues to them. And so we're trying to problem-solve that and work with agencies and groups that are coming to feed people there. And that might not be the best place for it right now. And the library is asking us to partner with them and take a look into and see what we can do on a community level. And so, so baby steps with that. And then also with the revisiting zone, just like you said, to your point, Zone Three. When we proposed this before you all voted it in, Councilmember Fincher had asked, hey, how often will we take a look at it? And at the time, chief committed to looking at it on an annual basis. Like I said, we're keeping an eye on things. We don't want to jump to conclusion too quickly. We want to let the data play out. So, but we certainly wanted to give you all an update on this, and we're at a halfway point, and it's a good time to take a look at it, and especially with the Light Rail just starting up, and we're already having problems up in that area. The data shows that. So, and that's why we're talking about that one so, so much earlier.
Okay, so I appreciate the work you're doing, Commander O'Reilly. We're still friends, right?
Yeah. To add one more piece, is to remember that when this was passed, this only applies to a very narrow subset of people. So it's not just anybody traveling in these areas. It's people who have been charged with a crime, and the crime that they've been charged with has a nexus to drug possession. So it's really critical in order to, for the court to continue to support our ordinance, that it's, that it's limited to those folks.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Commander O'Reilly. Thank you for your presentation and for providing all this information. I do agree, we need a longer time period. Revisit annually would be good. I agree with the Council President, this is a multifaceted issue, and this is just one tool. We have to try everything. So I'm glad that the judges are actually using this tool that we have. I was actually kind of surprised to see that there have been 119 orders, so I'm thankful that they are using this tool. And I do want to point out that in the three existing zones, overdose deaths have gone down. So that's a big deal.
That's another good piece, absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larmour?
So question on Zone Three and End of Production. How much of that do we feel is because Fred Meyer's has moved? And so sort of like, you know, I would assume like shoplifting in some of the other ones?
Well, the Fred Meyer, I mean, closed down fairly recently. So I think the, the data is still out on that. I think Phoenix Court probably has some, some role in that. We'll keep an eye on it for now. And we'll see. I, yeah, I, we'll, we'll have to see. We'll have to see where the numbers look in perhaps another six months of data, and we'll certainly take a look, keep an eye on it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Fred Meyer's closed in October, and the numbers are until October, so.
Any other questions? Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you very much. For the proposed Zone Four, I'm going to add in that I'm sure that CCS and Thea Bowman House would welcome this. They have been looking for additional tools and working, working with Commander O'Reilly and his team. And they have installed some new fences and all, but I believe that this would help them and be something that they would appreciate.
All right. Any additional questions before the motion?
All right, I move to adopt ordinance number 4533, amending Kent City Code Section 9.45.040 to add a new stay out of drug area zone within the city of Kent in the area of Pacific Highway South and bounded to the north by Kent Des Moines Road and to the south by South 244th Street.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Councilmember Fincher?
I'm going to add more thing, one more thing. I just want to thank you also. I had a conversation with Judge Franz, I think it was week before last, and was observing. And so I want to also commend you and both the prosecuting and the defenses team for the work that is going on with this. So I would, what I was hoping, we won't have the full numbers till we get to the year period, but I'm, I am appreciative of your work also. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much for the presentation. And back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, next up, we have Public Works, and Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much. We have David Payne coming up. Well, I thought we were going to have David Payne, but it looks like we're going to have Director Chad Bierin coming up and accepting yet again more funds in Public Works.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. David Payne would have loved to have been here. He actually is out, we're currently taking care of some issues on the levee with the water levels coming up. So he's out there, he volunteered to go out and help. Excited to be here and bring forward the opportunity to accept some more money. We got word from PSRC that, well, we were asked if we could take more money. We said yes. And in fact, we were able to take money on three different grants. Two of those were within the signing authority of the mayor. This one needs to come back to council. So the total was just over $1.38 million that we brought in in those three grants. Before you tonight is a question to take an additional $1.216 million for the work that was actually awarded by council on 212th Street. So I think fairly, we recommend approval.
Any questions or comments? Well, then in that case, since I'd love to take money in.
I move to accept funds from the Peaches Sound Regional Council.
I move to accept funds from the Puget Sound Regional Council in the amount of $1,216,100 for the South 212th Street preservation, 59th Place South to 72nd Avenue South project. amend the budget and authorize the expenditure of funds as necessary and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We just had one item.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. And that was the last item for Public Works that you will be on for committee after all. So thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned until 5:15 for council workshop. Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, December 9, 2025. It is our last workshop of the year and we have two items. First up, 2025 YMCA update. And we have our Parks Director Julie Periscandola. Welcome.
Awesome, thank you. Good afternoon, council president and council members. So I'm Julie Periscandola, Kent Parks Director. You know, while many city departments actually do a lot of partnering with the Kent Y, it's the Parks Department that kind of manages the multi-year MOU and kind of that direct partnership. And I believe this is the first time in quite a few years that we've actually had the Y here. So I'm really excited that we were able to pull it out by year end. As you all know, the Y opened in 2019. And at that time, we put together a ton of agreements, but one specific one is a 50-year term, which is an operating MOU that kind of governs how we partner together. As a reminder, the city does send a 95,000 annual contribution to their operations, which is really to support the aquatics function of that. And in turn, there's a lot of performance kind of metrics that the YMCA has to meet. How that works is every end of year, they send us a great annual report on how many scholarships, how many swim lessons, all that good stuff to make sure that we're still in alignment. So we see that. So I just wanted to let you know there. And then this evening, I'm very excited, we are being joined by Jenna Montoya. Come on up. Jenna is the new Kent Y Branch Director. And Jenna's going to share a little bit more about all the great things at the Y. I'm going to be here just in case you have any questions for me. So Jenna.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. My name is Jenna Montoya. I'm the branch executive of the Kent YMCA as of May this year. Prior to that, I was YMCA Greer Seattle for seven years. So I'm happy to be here today. I try to keep it exciting for you. There's a lot of fun and exciting things happening at the Kent YMCA, especially in partnership with the Kent Parks Department. So I'll share some information and updates on just all of the growth that we've had when it comes to our revenue and our programs, our expanded many partnerships to create access. So been a successful year and we've been honored to be experiencing that and feel a lot of pride. So after the renovation with the Merrill Meadows Park, it's been great to kind of see that flourish and all of the neighbors and families joined together, lots of special programming and events. And we work closely with the Parks Team to ensure that 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 space is safe and enriching for everyone. We, of course, support steady use of the bathrooms in our buildings for those using the dog park and the parking lot and the parks outside and just protecting those spaces, including the parking for those attendees. Along with that, we have for the second year in a row have convened our Kent Community Days in partnership with the Kent Parks Department. So we have activities in and outside of the Kent Y along with various partners throughout those. And so we work closely to create just free access of the facility and amenities, run special programming and expose people to the information, access points for the YMCA programming and the Kent Parks programming. We had the honor of supporting the Kent Concert Series that happened. I think this is the first summer that they did that, the Merrill Meadows Park. If you aren't aware, it was a huge success. There was hundreds, if not thousands, of attendees to that event. And we hosted the performers and bands inside the building. That was very exciting for our staff. We felt like we were meeting local celebrities. So that was a great opportunity this year. We hope to continue. And we made a lot of new great relationships and partnerships with the city of Kent team through that. A couple of updates on our membership base and member base. So we've had a growth in our overall membership units. We are currently at 3,216 memberships and over 7,500 individual members. Majority of those, over half of those are family memberships. And then our adult and active older adults or senior memberships is at least 1,500 memberships. We have also grown in our offerings and enrollments for all of our programming. In addition, we had some new youth sports additions this year. We've done vetted ballet and expanded soccer programs, added volleyball, doubled our youth basketball league programming, which is the biggest partition participation base that we have. So we're excited to see that grow in this coming year in 2026. Our aquatics programming, so I think across the nation, but especially in South King County, we did have a decrease in paid enrollments for swim lesson programming. And with such lesson programming. And with such a critical need there is for water safety knowledge and swim skills, we did partner with several organizations and local groups to increase access through tailored programming and then just programming just to really highlight water safety skills for families. So lots of special events around that and programming. And we did have, we added an additional free community swim day to the initial two days a week that we have, so three days where a community can access our pools. And we did have 3,522 participants this year in our open recreational swim times. The Y offers social impact programs, obviously, and we have doubled our participants in programs like our behavioral health, foster care, support, and certification for families, and housing. So we've had over 900 participants in our Social Impact Center programs. And this year, we have welcomed the crisis response team into the YMCA, which now operates daily, year-round, to respond to crisis calls that are coming through local 911 and routed to our service providers to support families with youth experiencing a crisis. And so that, there is a, one of the teams, one of the many teams in the YMCA of Greater Seattle is housed out of the Kent YMCA. Our before and after-school programs are still operating out of Carriage Crest, Fairwood, Panther Lake Elementary, Ridgewood, and Sunrise Elementary this year. We have increased our average participants every day from 150 to 200 participants every day throughout the year. We do provide, continue to provide, warming and cooling shelter for extreme weathers, extreme weather throughout the year. And we're prepared to continue that as we are seeing some temperatures plummet in the future, next couple of weeks and months coming ahead of us. We look forward to opening our doors and supporting families with access to our facilities. We have a long list of community partnerships. Again, that's an area where we continue to grow and expand and deepen our partnerships in meaningful ways to ensure we're being relevant to community need and communities' wants, and also expand access to programs. Some of those that I'll list off are Mobile Medical Unit, ICHS, has a mobile medical clinic that parks a couple times a month at the YMCA in Kenton and Auburn, and existing patients and new people seeking services can access care there. Our, if you've heard of, SEALUP, Community Law Enforcement, Committee Emergent Law Enforcement Program, is a program we're really excited to, proud to participate in. We take in an intern who is awaiting the academy with the Kent Police Department. And this year, we had an additional, so instead of one intern, we were able to take in another intern. And this is a significant partnership that's important to us, and, you know, creating opportunity for law enforcement to develop better relationships with the community, learn about who they're serving in the Kent community, and not only that, but just develop really meaningful relationships with our staff. And so we've seen that program flourish. I'm really excited about that, and I hope to continue to grow that program. It's also created another avenue for us to strengthen our relationship with Kent Police Department and just a better partner to serve community. Kent School District, the outreach program is students up to age 24 who are, those with diverse abilities and are developing the professional skills. So they come in a couple times a week throughout the entire school year, serving members, helping create a welcoming environment. We depend on them, you know, to help us create that space within the Kent YMCA, and I'm grateful to have those individuals here. This year, we provided access for them to come into their community outing days. They'll come into the YMCA and partake in recreational activities and sports. So we look forward to continuing that partnership in 2026. This year, we had a major Kent Community Health Fair. It's the second year in partnership with Latinos Promoting Good Health. We doubled our attendance there for people to receive significant services like vaccinations. We had dental exams, vision exams, foot care, significant health services. We've had mammogram visits for community as well, whether they're insured or uninsured. Another is Water Safety Day with No More Under of King County, Unity in the Community with Glover Empowering Mentoring, the annual Kent Bike Rodeo with the Kent Bicycle Advisory Board. And the Kent YMCA started a food pantry called Pantry of Hope that operates every single Friday to provide kind of a stigma-free food access point for community members. And we serve at least, we are working on tracking this efficiently, but we see lots of people coming on a regular basis when we have this every Friday. First come, first serve, non-perishables and fresh produce for families. At least 20 families a week have been partaking in the food pantry. And we expect to expand this and shift this depending on community need and desires as we move forward. As Julie referenced, there's several different commitments that we've made through our contract. So we've stayed committed to those things by providing financial assistance to families. We're prepared to provide up to $1 million in financial assistance. This year, we expect to, at year's end, have provided $730,000 in financial assistance toward the membership and programs. And we've expanded our financial assistance programs this year compared to years past, where we've increased the award based off of income, also expanded the awards to additional income brackets. So we expect to see that number increase with those changes. And that was in response to, you know, feedback and some collaboration for the South King County area and South King County YMCA branches. We host the adaptive swim program 30 weeks throughout the year on Saturday mornings at the Kent YMCA pool. And along with every, annually, our Kent Meridian and Kentwood Swim Teams, this year, we have additionally accommodated with another hour during each practice date throughout the swim season for the Kent School District for the Kent Ridge Team while they are without access to Lindbergh Pool. In addition, just kind of summarizing up the rest of kind of the information that I wanted to present to you guys is that we are very committed to continue to bring visibility to the opportunities at the Kent YMCA, Kent Merrill Meadows campus, and we have spent a lot of time out in community events, at least six community events, providing free passes. We don't limit the amount of free passes that we provide to community, ensuring people are aware of our financial assistance and really spending time now following up to make sure that people are, walk through that financial assistance process, and their awards are realized and they can access programming. Are there any questions that anyone has?
Thank you. Thank you, Jenna, and very nice to meet you. I have a question about the warming and cooling station. Is that for memberships, or any family in Kent could access that as a warming and cooling station during inclement weather?
Yes, any individual will be given access.
Thank you. Oh, wow. Councilmember Boyd, followed by Councilmember Michelle.
Yeah, thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, Jenna. You covered a lot of very important information, and she asked one of the questions that I wanted to ask. But how would a person out there, unhoused person, know about your offerings for inclement weather? I mean, is there an app, or is there a, I mean, how would they know where to go to when the weather gets, when the weather gets so cold?
So it's something that we'll share on any social media platform that we have, along with our landing page on the YMCA of Greater Seattle website. And it is something that has been expanded onto other platforms, but it kind of varies per branch. So that's something that we could definitely consider if it isn't already being shared out on the, I know we've shared out things on the mayor's calendar before, and then we share it on social media through, like, I Love Kent and some other popular platforms.
Okay. And also, before you leave, collect a card from your contact information from you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. Welcome, Jenna. Thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering what, when are the free swim times, days and times for the community, and how can community members find out about that?
Sure. So in the Kent Parks, one of the places that it's available is in the Kent Parks and Recreation Guide. It is on Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then the times will vary based off of which pool you want to access, lap swimming versus recreational swim. And then as well as Monday and Wednesday evenings.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Fridays, your food bank. What time is your food bank open?
The food bank is typically between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. or until supply, while supplies last. So we'll keep it out there until it's gone.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I am a Y member, and I am there on the Peloton. And I do have a complaint. Sometimes they don't work at 8 o'clock in the mornings.
Oh, no.
Just kidding. No, we get, you have great staff, and they're always helpful. We get it fixed. So, thank you. I am really, I love the Pelotons at the Y. So if nobody knew and they want to go there, please don't go at 8 o'clock in the mornings.
One of the lucky Y's.
There's only two there on the bike, so. But I, thank you so much. And I have taken advantage of your swim lessons. I've taken swim lessons three times in my life, as a child, and then in my teens, and then again now as an adult. So, yeah, so very, I don't know how useful they'll be, but thank you. I mean, I'm able to swim, but I have, getting over fear that I have. But I would encourage individuals and community members who want to take lessons, please do sign up at the Y. It's very important for, you know, us to be able to swim. You never know when you're going to need that, so. And I think there was Councilmember Boyd, he's not here today, but he did promise he was going to take swim lessons at the Y. So we need to confirm if he did it or not, but.
On it.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? And I, thank you so much. It was very nice to meet you, and thank you for the presentation. I absolutely love our Y, and I love that it's in, you know, the partnership we have with our Kent Parks and community swims. I do take my kids there for the little pool on, sometimes I'm a member, but still, there's, I see families there taking advantage of that. So is it the same community hours for that as well for?
Activity pool.
Activity pool.
It starts slightly later. So that one is in the evening from 4:00 to 7:30 during the weekdays, on Monday, Wednesday night. And on Sundays, you'll access it 12:00 to 3:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
One more. Did you mention the scholarships?
Yes. Maybe I did not give you a report out on that. We wanted to know about the financial, the scholarships for.
Just that it's available for people who are in need that.
Yes, absolutely. It's available for anyone, and we try to make it a pretty simple process. Again, we want to meet people where they are and walk them through it, and we don't require a whole bunch of jumping through hoops or preventing, even initially presenting income verification. So it's a great program.
All right. Thank you so much, Julie. Did you want to come up and say anything? Okay, all right.
Good to be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And next up, we have permitting update, and we have Matt Gilbert here. Welcome, Deputy ECD Director.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Councilmember-elect. It's good to see you again. Oh, thank you, Melissa. My name is Matt Gilbert. I'm the Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development. My role there is to, primarily, my role is to oversee the permitting process. So that can be, you know, we permit a lot of different things, a lot of construction, from new neighborhood construction, big new apartment buildings, all the way down to the hood that a new restaurant might put in over their, over their cook, cooking area, and probably, you know, new windows and things like that. So it's kind of a soup-to-nuts kind of operation. And I wanted to walk through that. That's something that can be frustrating for people. Council President Cowherd and I have had a few discussions about this, that there's some discussion out in the community, or, you know, people get frustrated at times and they reach out. I know we get copied on the emails from time to time. I take the calls from time to time, and we take those seriously. But I do want to give some context to that and then talk about some of the themes and some of what we're doing there to address those and make things easier, because ultimately, I tell my people all the time that part of our job is to restore or to promote trust in government, that we're here to help. We're not here to, our purpose isn't to create roadblocks. Some roadblocks naturally occur, but we're here to help. So let's see what we can, see if I can explain that clearly here. So before we get into the issues, I wanted to give a little bit of context, a little overview, the whats and the whys, and the how many sort of questions that, about our operation in ECD and at the city. So, big picture, we administer and enforce codes for building safety, public and private infrastructure, zoning, environmental protection, rental housing maintenance, and we have, there's a public notice component to that. And those are just the big categories. We have specialists kind of in each of those realms. You probably know, ECD is a staff of about 51. To do everything in bullet point one there, it takes about 42 people who work very hard every day at that. We public with, we partner in our efforts with Parks, with Public Works, with the, with the fire department, and with a number of outside consultants who give us some specialized technical help when we need it. And all of that is funded primarily by permit, by the general fund, which comes through permit revenue. We update those, as you know, our permit fees every year, and those are designed to keep up with, with the economy, with inflation, and hopefully continue to cover those costs. So I have to tell, we have the conversation sometimes, what's the point? Why, no one loves being told what to do. No one loves having to follow all the rules. No one loves having to pay for permits or wait in line, and, you know, when they have a dream or have something that they're trying to do. So it's important that we understand what's the point of all of this. It's the, there's public interest and private interest that we help to support. On the public side, the big one is safety, safety and quality of buildings and infrastructure. We really take it for granted in our, in this country, in our society, in our modern times, that buildings are safe, that when the wind blows or the earth shakes, they're, they're not going to fall on us, which that's the result of building codes. And we, we're here to enforce those codes. Most of that's done through plan review and inspection, and a little bit of code enforcement as well. Our administration of the codes also results in environmental protection. We protect streams and wetlands and water quality and critical slopes and things like that. There's a safety in a, in a kind of a, like a public infrastructure, a natural infrastructure element there as well. Another public interest here is land use control. It allows the City Council and the elected officials throughout the state to direct how the built environment unfolds over time. That also requires people to check the plans, make sure things are going as per the codes. And also, we have sort of a corollary there is that we encourage investment. As we, as we administer these codes, we are helpful and we engage with folks. We want to build a good reputation for the city as a place where businesses can grow and new businesses can locate. So then on the private side, and this is a conversation I have with homeowners from time to time, that when, yes, it's hard and takes time and money to prepare plans and get permits, but there's a big customer, like a consumer protection element there, where our inspectors and our plan reviewers are ensuring that the work that's done usually in people's homes is to code. There's not corners cut that it's safe, and, you know, that it meets the, at least the minimum quality standards in the codes. When there's a kind of an imbalance of knowledge there, we're there to, to check. That also protects future home and building owners. And for neighborhoods and things, when we think about zoning and land use, we're talking about predictable development that is following the council's vision. So I tell people, it makes you sure that you're not going to have a dynamite factory built in your neighborhood, things like that. So, I'll give you a little bit of info on the volumes. Every year, we do about 4,700 permits. I hear, my phone rings about a few of them. I think you all get copied on the emails with just a tiny fraction of those. Most of them go very smoothly. And again, like I said, we permit mechanical systems, you know, HVAC systems, plumbing, anytime these buildings are touching their plumbing, the contractors come in, they get permits, they pay the fee, they get the inspections, and it all goes very well. Sometimes it doesn't. Usually, as I'll get into in a bit, it's Sometimes it doesn't. Usually, as I'll get into in a bit, it's because of a lack of knowledge and experience where we, where we try to help. In twenty twenty-five, we're at about forty-six hundred twenty-two. Actually, that's a little bit of an estimate for the rest of the month, but we're right about where we are every year. Now, the, the composition of those permits changes with the economy and, um, I addressed that a little bit on, on the right side. We're down for single family home construction this year. And I think, you know, if we, if you pay attention to interest rates and the kind of economic news, that's not a surprise. As I show there, it's down forty-five percent since twenty twenty-three. Now, we did have a little bit of a pent up demand post-COVID kind of boom there and it's, it's tailed off a bit. But we've seen a similar decrease in large commercial buildings. Where those are down about fifty percent since pre-COVID on an annual basis. That doesn't mean it stopped, but I think what we're seeing with, with the cost of money being high and with some of the economic uncertainty that, that the bigger projects, which usually come from larger capital, they're staying on the sidelines for now until things become more predictable and the money gets more affordable. We do a lot of utility permits. Everything that happens in the right of way, every time you see the cones in the road and the traffic flaggers out there, that's something that we've looked at. And, you know, we've got PSE and we've got the new fiber, easy fiber, for instance, they're coming in and all, all the kind of legacy. We call them our utility partners. Um, they come to us every time they need to work. So we do about five, five hundred fifty-five this year, which is pretty normal. A little bit of news on middle housing, ADUs are up three hundred percent since a few years ago. So the excitement that, you know, all the talk that we've had here, all of the policy work that's happened here is, is mirroring the public interest and we're seeing that, that happen. And I'll get, there's, there's some complexity there that I'll touch on in a moment.
Really quickly going.
Sure.
So is that twenty-eight ADUs?
Twenty-eight.
Is that since twenty twenty-three or in twenty twenty-five?
I'm sorry. Yeah, that was, those twenty-eight submitted in twenty twenty-five.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's a big increase.
Thank you.
Yeah. Here's my data for my, my, my big data presentation for tonight. This shows, um, over time, the, the big orange bars are the, is the permit volume every year. And I'm really sorry for the small font. Some of you have it in front of you there, but each left to right starts in twenty nineteen to, to this year. You see the volume undulating a bit there. The green line represents revenue from that, from all of those permits. Because we permit such a wide diversity of different types of projects, it results in a fairly level flow of, of, of permit fees. So of course, you know, that, things could always change. What we found is that a lot of the, the macro factors that impact permit, interest in permits and interest in development are things that are beyond our control. You know, it's, like I said, it's interest rates or it's, you know, the global economy or the regional economy. So we're, we're more responding to this, but I think we've diversified. Well, part of it's that Kent has a fairly diverse economic base with the industrial valley, commercial, residential. You know, our position within the region continues to make Kent an attractive place to be. And so we, we tend to see permit activity not going up and down too much. We, the, the low year there is twenty. Obviously COVID was tough for everybody, but we've bounced back to normal pretty quickly. I'll address review timelines. This is always, um, you know, this is a popular question. I, I know that one of the big complaints is my permit took a long time. That there are myriad reasons for where, where that could happen. So I'll give you some averages just, um, and again, this is something we could, we could expand on in a later presentation. So I just picked a few types and these, these are, these are broad averages. So the first category is land use. This is your, the, the permitting that happens before a neighborhood is ever built. And we put up the public notice boards. Or, um, it says a new neighborhood, it'd be like a major new commercial project, a major new apartment building. It's going to go through something we call entitlement. It's a pre, sort of a pre permitting. That, and so I have the, the metric there of eight weeks to first review. And I list that because that's something that we have control over. If a person brings in a set of plans and we have everything we need, and we don't always, but we'll work with them on that. Once we get everything we need, it's distributed to the fire reviewer and the engineering and the planner and, uh, the building person maybe. It takes about eight weeks for us to get back to the person with comments. We'll say, it looks generally good, but please fix A, B, C, and D. Then we, we put that back in their court. At that point, we don't have any control over it. They, they can take, they can come back in, you know, a week later, or they can come back months later. So that if, when someone says, how long does it take to get a permit? It, it's usually inclusive of that entire time. So when we're talking about performance of our process, I think this metric is, is more sort of germane to, um, understanding our, our performance. So land use, eight weeks, civil construction, that's the big, sort of the dirt work, the utility work that precedes most big projects. That's very complicated. That's probably the most complex thing we do in the permitting operation because it involves a lot of variables as far as what's underground, you know, what utilities exist. Where's the water table? Where are the streams and wetlands? What's the condition of the roads? How is it safe? Is it going to be safe to put new driveways on it, on a particular stretch of road? Those are technical questions. They involve city liability. They involve a lot of variability. So that's probably our biggest challenge area. So once that work gets done, we usually move into building permits. Those are easier because they're based on codes and they're, they're not, there's not as many variables. It's something that's being constructed. So we generally take about four weeks to get back to folks on those. And then utility permits, those are in there. Again, that's a small set of applicants. It's our utility partners. But we do a lot of those and it takes us about five weeks to get those out the door. And we do prioritize if, if, when we have emergencies, we have urgent situations or, you know, if there's an outage somewhere that affects a lot of people, we'll turn those around, um, on a, on an accelerated basis. Okay, a little bit more. And I promise I'm getting to the issues part. This is just still a little bit of background. Um, I, it's hard to talk about accountability and timelines without talking about Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. This is something that I brought some legislation to the council a few months back related to this. I won't get into that. But basically this is the state legislature's attempt to lower the cost of housing by speeding the, 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 the pace of permitting. And they're doing it at first, you know, of course there's a system. They're doing it by, um, having the cities in the, the big counties. Um, there's the, the five big ones. It's King Pierce, Snohomish, Thurston, Clallum, or, anyway, Clark, a bunch. It's about fifty different cities. That were being asked every year to report how long it takes to get a preliminary plat through. That's your basic entitlement for a neighborhood. Anything related to a multifamily building. I have binding site plan. That's kind of like a plat and the final plat's another element of, of a new neighborhood. So we report on our timelines there, as do all these other jurisdictions. And twenty twenty-four was the first reporting year. And it was kind of chaotic because it's a whole new system that, uh, Department of Commerce is, is administering. And so the data was noisy and it will get better over time. But the takeaway for this first year is that Kent is sort of right there with everybody else. We are, we are over the state mandated timelines, that there's not a lot of danger for us, or there's no danger other than we're not going to have to like refund fees or anything like that. But that's, it's a goal for us to get down to the one hundred and seventy days, um, for a preliminary plat. We were over that. But, um, the average across the state was, the jurisdictions were one hundred and ninety-nine percent over that in terms of days. The final plats were similar. So we weren't, we were below the average and being over the threshold. So we're, we're in a good position. We can get better. And that's something that we'll work towards. Uh, but we'll be reporting that yearly and Commerce publishes that every July, I think. So. That will, that's just something that is sort of a general accountability tool so that everyone knows how long all these jurisdictions are taking. And it's nice, actually, it's a little bit of a pain to have to report, but it's nice to see that data put together so we can have, have comparables to peer cities. Okay.
Pat, Councilmember Fincher has a question.
Any idea, or do you remember off the top of your head, how many jurisdictions were actually able to meet the, the regs there?
There were five that were close. I don't think any of them, any of them met the regs across the board. And these are, these regs are, they're, they're targets. And so what the state does, it allows cities to set their own targets. Or it says you can be subject to the state targets. If you don't meet the state targets, there aren't really any consequences. In part because of the legislation that, that, that the council passed, recognizing the, the steps that we take to make things go faster. So that in the state legislation, they said, if, if you take steps to speed things up, then you won't be subject to any penalties. If you don't meet the mandated timelines. But we want to meet the timelines ultimately, or we want to adjust the timelines in order, you know, adopt our own. But that's something that we want to have good, solid data on so that we can set realistic timelines for ourselves. So that's something that we'll, we'll bring forward as we, as we accumulate that data.
Thank you.
Oops, went too far. Okay, so there's a lot of words on the screen. I just wanted to share, uh, maybe summarize this a little bit. That most of our customers are contractors and designers who mostly know what to do. They know how permitting works. It's basically the same in every jurisdiction. Similar codes, they're driven by the state. There's some local differences, but processes are generally the same. However, if you've never done it before, it is a mystery. It, it can be dazzling and maybe you go to, if you want to put like, I'll just use the example from this week. If you want to put a new deck on your house, what do you, what's the first step? Most people have no idea. So they'll call, they'll get connected with a contractor perhaps. And that contractor will give them advice. Now is, the question is, is it the right advice? Maybe their advice is, well, you could get a permit, but you don't really have to. Or they'll say you could roll the dice, or they will say, yes, you need a permit. And the good ones will say, yes, you need a permit and I can provide that service for you because I've done it before and I know what to do and all of that. So you take that throughout all the range of things that we look at. That dynamic happens not usually on the big projects. The big projects usually have big money and big consultants and they know what they're doing. But once you get into residential work or someone who's trying to put a restaurant into a space, into a commercial space, we don't know who they're first talking to and what kind of advice they're getting. So that can be fraught. And oftentimes the city will get involved when something goes wrong. Maybe, maybe the contractor gets caught working without a permit. And we say, please come in and get a permit. And and then it's like, sometimes it's like pulling teeth to get the right information and get it all legitimized. And the, the, the city is often vulnerable in that, in that time because maybe the contractor is telling the owner, you wouldn't believe what the city's making me do. And, and we'll, we'll come in if we have a chance and say, we just need the drawings. And this is actually pretty easy. We're not asking for anything extraordinary. Now, I'm not saying that we couldn't do better at times, but that is a dynamic we hear about all the time. And so I, I spend a lot of my time stepping in, in between and trying to educate owners and tell them what's really required. Sometimes it's after the fact when everyone's agitated though. So that's often the cause of the calls and the emails. So I would just summarize here that the major issues are complex, the codes are complex. I tell people all the time that these modern codes are written by technicians for technicians and it's, and on most, most projects, a person who doesn't have any exposure to this kind of thing needs help. And like I said, there's all, there's the quality control issue there. But on a, on a, on a new building project, you'll have just this whole gamut of professionals like utility engineers and surveyors, biologists, traffic engineers, arborists, architects, structural engineers. Those are just the ones I could think of when I was writing this. There's, there's others. They all cost money. They all have other things to do. So there's, there's timing, there's, there's expense. There's the quality of the work that all kind of feeds into the success of a project as it moves to the permitting process. A second major issue is the complexity for the city. Now, I think about this in terms of land use and middle housing because as we do infill development, things get closer and closer together. So the chance for friction it goes up. The chance for conflicts with, uh, and the one that happens a lot is with how close together can you have your driveways on a street? There's traffic safety concerns there. And so we work with designers all the time to make sure that driveway is going in the right place. And that actually has a major effect on the design of a project. If you can't get in, you know, at the north end of your site and you've got to move it to the south, your whole layout could change. And so that's just like one little detail that makes a big difference. Um, but as we infill, that kind of question becomes harder and harder to answer. Um, the third category is, as I've kind of touched on, just the lack of experience from the owners. And so their expectations might, you know, could be anywhere and that might not be realistic. So related to that is middle housing, ADUs. Everything that you all are so familiar with now is going to create a lot more opportunity for landowners to become first time developers. And so this whole, um, education process or lack of understanding will become more and more evident, or we'll have more chances to encounter this, this dynamic. And so that, that's kind of a, you know, take a deep breath and, you know, you know, have some patience. And we know that we'll be working with folks that maybe didn't think of themselves as developers before, or maybe they think it's really easy. Oh, I will just build a house in my backyard or I'll just turn my basement into an ADU. Then we get to help them understand that that's doable. Yes.
Question and a comment or a suggestion maybe. Question is about the ADU permits. Do we have a streamlined process for it? It's like fairly easy application or is it?
It's easier than it used to be.
Okay.
We used to have a special ADU process that people would go through and they'd sign covenants that promised they would always live in the other unit. And there'd be some, there was, there were even neighbor notification requirements. And so part of the kind of reform on ADUs that we, you've been a part of has meant dropping a lot of that. So it's really just a building permit. It's nothing, but I mean, I say just a building permit. That can be daunting for some folks. So it's, I would say it's streamlined compared to what it used to be.
And I think maybe just, just a suggestion, Matt, if we're able to maybe having a one-on-one class on if you're thinking about building a deck or ADU in your backyard or any project. Maybe like, you know, having a class for our residents to just kind of learn what not to do and what kind of the processes. It's a suggestion. It could be in person, online, whatever works for us. Maybe just a something as an educational piece for the community so they don't keep falling into the traps and making it more frustrating for them. And we're hearing about it after because they've gone through the process.
Yeah.
For a while.
Resources are important, I think.
Yeah.
It's, it's sort of a never ending.
Yeah.
Effort. Uh, one of the issues that we face is we don't know, I mean, anyone who owns a home could decide they want to put a, a deck on, you know, just for instance, put a deck on their property tomorrow. For us, it's hard for us to go find them before they come to us. And often they'll come to us when they're frustrated. So I, I could see, I, I, we could talk about some more ideas of how to get that message out though. I think that's a great idea.
And I think Councilmember Fincher has a comment.
Well, just to extend on her idea was to then make sure that it is recorded somehow. So that people can see that. And maybe since we have new software now, when we are sending out mailings to people, letting them know that we have this available to them after the initial class is done.
I just had the same thought as Council President was talking. So, yeah, we have, we actually have resources for businesses right now that either on our website or, you know, that we link out to about, about, um, how to hire a contractor, what to look for. Actually, State Labor and Industries covers that as well. So I think we could, we could add something on to that as well.
Looks like Councilmember Boyd has a comment.
Yes, how you doing, Matt? I was looking at your, it says permitting frustrations and you talk about electronic permitting. How would you do an electronic permitting? I mean, there's no face to face you stayed on here.
Yeah. Have an unintended consequence of the fact that we've gone to online permitting. We were moving that direction before COVID. Then when COVID happened and everyone had to stay home, we had to stand up a process really quickly that allowed people to submit permits and make payments and receive, I'm sorry, submit drawings, make payments and then receive permits electronically. And, and, and now our, our new permitting software is coming online. And so it's really making that the norm. So the, the only drawback there is that we don't have that face to face interaction. If someone brings in a set of drawings and there's something missing, it's real easy for one of our, one of our. for one of our, one of our frontline staff to say, okay, tell me why this isn't here. Is there a reason that you, you left this out? And sometimes there's a reason.
Okay.
You know, sometimes it just makes sense. But there was an education element there that happened in that face-to-face interaction that now doesn't happen because people are sitting behind a screen. And then maybe they'll get a rejection from the computer, you know, from the software system. And so instead of being able to ask questions, it's, there's more of a frustration element there. So that's something, there's been a little bit of a swap there. The convenience of being able to submit these drawings at, you know, midnight, you know, whenever, 24 hours a day, not having to drive down, not having to print out big rolls of plans. That's nice, but something's been lost there. So that's something we need to.
Okay, one of my last questions probably is, how many full-time employees do you have, and code inspectors that you send out? How many do you have right now?
Building inspectors, we have six.
Are you going to be needing any more in the future, you think?
Yes, we always want more people.
You always want more, okay.
Well, I don't think we're at a point right now. I think we're good for now. What we do, I'm sorry, to, I, I will never turn down an offer for some, some additional help, but we offer next-day inspections. That's something in our operation that has been true for a long time, so I can't take credit for it. But on behalf of the department, I'm proud of that.
Okay.
So when the contractors are working, they get to a point where they need an inspection. Let's say they're laying a foundation or putting up framing. They don't have to stop for a week while they wait for an inspector. And I've heard those stories from other jurisdictions. In the city of Kent, we get out there the next day. There's, there'll be an inspector on the phone first thing in the morning and the next day saying, I, you know, when do you need me?
Okay.
And we're out there. So that really helps things flow.
Okay, well, that's good, that's good to know. That's good to know. Thank you, Matt.
Councilmember Schoutner.
Thank you, Council President. Matt, you might get to this in your next slide, but going back to this face-to-face interaction piece that we don't have anymore. If I submit a permit, and then after four weeks you respond, and there's things that I need to do to be able to resubmit that, if I have questions about that, is it, and I want to talk to somebody, is that part easier, or how does that work?
Yeah, we always, each of the reviewers who looks at, let's say you bring your deck permit in, and a couple, there's a couple people that look at that, and the letter goes out that says, please change A, B, C, and D. There will be contact information listed on that correspondence, phone number and email. So we're, we're available to clarify, yeah.
Thank you. I think there are more, no more questions, so we can continue.
I'm just about done, so thank you for your attention. So my last major issue here is the tech. There's just a tech learning curve with our new software. It's new, and it, like anything that's new, it's got some rough edges. There's some, there's some complexities that we'll look at smoothing out. We're at about, I think we're at about 90% stood up with that new, that new software. It's, it's available for the vast majority of permits. We're kind of getting the last things done now, so a lot of our, of our implementation resources are going towards getting it all, all stood up. The next phase will be sanding off the rough edges. And I think one of the things that we can look at is the customer experience and how they, you know, is it as simple as it could be? In some cases, I mean, I know of some that I, that I have on a list that need to be reexamined because people get hung up. Like, if you have to read a whole page of instructions in order to do the basic thing, I think there's an opportunity to make it better. So we'd like things to be as intuitive as possible, and that, that takes time and refinement to get there. And one other issue, I didn't list it here, maybe I said it before, but developing land is just more expensive than most people realize. Like I said, all of those, all of those professionals that have to be involved, contractors, the time, materials, just labor is expensive. We're, projects in Kent compete with Seattle and Bellevue and Redmond for the same contractors, for the same dirt-moving machines, for, for the same drywall crews. So it's, it's a region-wide issue. And so there's kind of a distribution of, there's, 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 there's high, medium, and low-quality work that, you know, contractors that are out there. And, and it, there's just kind of a, a lack of expertise, or there's a limited amount of expertise. Like I said, the surveyors and the engineers, and all the way down to the drywallers and the plumbers. There's only so many to go around. So the cost of labor, the cost of materials right now is also very high. And I think new, people who are new to the process are always kind of, are, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a moment where they're probably somewhat shocked at the cost. And when I've talked to those folks who are kind enough to calmly share these things with me, I know that that's, that's something that happens.
Councilmember Boyd has a question, Matt.
Okay, Matt, I said that was my last question, but here, here's the real last one. When I talked about your code inspectors, do they also act as code enforcement inspectors too?
Yeah, we have one who specializes. They, they're all out there, you know, this is really important with building safety. If some, if our code, if our inspectors see work that's happening without a permit, they'll stop and they'll, they'll put a stop to the work. It's called a red tag, and maybe you've seen them. What that red tag says is stop and come in and get a permit. You know, it's not like you can't do the work, but it's, you need to have it looked at. So they will, all the inspectors are authorized and expected to do that work.
Okay.
Now, the follow-up work is done by one of those inspectors who has to do the paperwork, and for some reason, he really loves doing that part. He's, he's, he's real, he's tenacious, and he's very well organized, and he keeps up with it really well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you again.
All right.
So, and I, I would probably add to this next slide just from this conversation, but this is a little bit of how we help to bridge the gap right now, the gap in basically expectations and knowledge. First thing, you know, we try to educate. We have a pre-application process that anyone can use. We, it's, the fee is low, I forget the number, but it's compared to the fees that normally go into permitting, it's low. So it's, and we don't really have expectations of the applicants there. If they want to bring in a drawing on a napkin of what they want to do, we will sit down with them and talk about it. Or if they want to bring in something that's well-developed, we'll respond to that. That's where we'll get, we'll get all the departments together and give comments. So when they, so they will know for a low cost of entry what to expect. Then they can work with their architect or work with their engineer and do some cost, some rough cost estimating to know whether it's smart to move forward with the project or not. We find those to be very useful. Also, if someone just wants to make some basic inquiries, we have all of our departments represented at the Permit Center today, as well, as well as our permit techs who are there to answer questions. And we have someone assigned every day just to answer the random walk-in public questions. So that, that's kind of a passive thing. People have to come, and they have to know that we're there. But we do talk to, gosh, I think it's about, it's like 10 to 15 people a day that drop by. And then some of them have questions, some of them just want to check on their permits. But, so we're there to educate. The, the second one, this is really helpful. The, the frontage, the frontage improvement legislation that you all considered tonight at, just in the last meeting, that brings a lot of clarity to our process. That's the council saying, here's how we want these sidewalks and road frontage improvements to be implemented on small projects. I can't tell you how many debates we've had among staff on those small projects about, well, is this is really big enough to, to shoulder the load of a big sidewalk improvement or a big road improvement? You know, this, this project probably, you know, might not happen if it has to pay for all that. And oftentimes, that's the case. As, as Matthew pointed out, and I think you've seen the number before, of the short plats that come in, only 30%, or they, they, the short plats that start, that's nine, lots or fewer, 30% of those make it to construction. And a lot of that's because the cost of improvements is very high. So there's a, there's a cost issue, and there's a clarity issue there. So those types of, staking out those positions clearly is very helpful. So we're, we're happy that that happened, or, you know, you'll be voting on that tonight. Something else we do, we, like I said, we include owners in our communications. We like to bridge the gap that might exist between a consultant or a contractor and the owner, just so the owner knows what the city's saying and without having to have someone, you know, to rely on somebody else. So we, we get their information upfront, and we communicate with them directly. Something else we've implemented is improved screening to make sure that the designers who give us drawings are not giving us half-baked drawings, that we're, we're getting everything we need so that we can do fewer reviews. And that's, that's working out really well. And some of it's reputational. We have to get a reputation that we demand that things be complete when they come in the door, that we won't accept, like I said, half-baked or half, half of a proposal. We've been doing that for about seven months, and that's specific to our civil construction drawings, which are very complex. So I, so our engineers will look at those the moment they come in and say, this is sufficient to move forward, or it's not. We do it very quickly, so that really cuts down the cycle time. The next one, this is sort of the Permit Center. If, if people are struggling with our tech, we say, come in, we have a machine here, we'll sit down and walk you through it. So we're trying to bridge that gap in, on a, in a face-to-face way when we can. The, the last one, this is really inside baseball, but we do see a lot of projects get, get hung up because they don't, usually if you have a big project, you'll, you'll move from the general permits to the more specific permits. In this case, you want to get your dirt work and your utilities figured out before you design the whole building because there's a relationship there. You need to know where you can put a driveway or where you can put a sewer line before you decide where you, where you put your building and what, how it's going to sit on a site and how big it can be and things like that. We've had, we've had some designers come in with everything designed at a high cost to the owner, and then have, then run into a problem where the building design doesn't work anymore, then it has to be all redone. So we see it, we're trying to protect the owners from getting, from spending too much money too soon and instead require that to be graduated and move through the process sequentially so that they know whether to spend the next amount of money on their, on their, on their consultants. So I know that's very, that's a big deal to us because we see the impacts, but it's a little bit, it's sort of under, underneath, underneath the hood. So that, I, I think we could add some video or some training, some outreach to this, and I've noted that, and so that's something we'll add to our agenda. Otherwise, that's all I have to say for tonight. So, oh, no, I'm sorry, there's one more. Gosh, if you have time. Sorry, I forgot about the last one. A few things on the horizon. Permit soft, software is being updated. That's, that's, we're going to get better data out of that. We're going to get, again, it's, it's a big, it's a big help to our customers in terms of convenience. Like I said, this, you miss the face-to-face, but you get, we, we get better, better ability to report on our performance. They get more convenience, but we have to implement it, and that's, that's, that's a job. Middle housing implementation challenges, like I said, we're going to have a bunch of new people who are becoming developers. So, and there's a lot of questions that, that will bring up with the city. That's a challenge. Also, we're just about done digitizing all our paper records. That really helps us with document retrieval. It's going to help us when our office moves. We've shed, it's, I remember starting our digitization process back when, just before President Obama was elected. We've, we had, we've had like 40, 50 years of building permits and land use permits sitting on our office, and now it's almost all gone, so we're really proud of that. So with that, I will stop talking and answer any remaining questions.
Any questions or comments for Matt? Thank you, Matt. I know I, we, I get a lot of phone calls and emails, and I usually reach out to you. And what I learn usually is because of the vendor they have chosen, the architect or designer, their process is delayed. So we run into that frustration quite a bit. So that's why I think education is very important for our communities because we keep hearing, Kent is so slow in their permitting processes. We don't have this issue in other places, or just kind of the same concern. And thank you for clarifying, and I think it'll be very useful for our community members to know that, you know, help is here if you have questions before you start with projects or before you are starting the process of hiring your vendors, whoever's helping you with your, your permitting processes or building processes. Reach out to the city as a resource to get some clarification questions answered, to see if it's worth it to get into it. And, yeah, and then I think having a class or some side of, some side of educational piece for the community would be great. And thank you for all the amazing work you're doing, and thank you for always answering your emails and phone calls that I, I get. So I appreciate that. And with that, I have Councilmember Schoutner.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Matt. I think it's really important for all of us to see this presentation, but also for the public to be able to see what's happening. And it's easy to say, oh, the city's doing this to me, the city's not, is holding me up on this. Can you just talk really quickly, what do you hear from other cities about their process?
Thank you for that. I, oftentimes, that comes from contractors or consultants who are responsible for getting permits through the process. Every year, I go to a gathering of people, like colleagues of mine in different cities, and one of the, our favorite topics of conversation is, do you hear that, that we, that Kent does better than Auburn or Burian or whoever? Oh, yeah, all the time. Because, you know, we'll hear that. So there's a, there's a, there's a little game, I don't know what you call the game, but it's like telephone or something like that, where it's, everyone points somewhere else. It's sort of a guilt-tripping type of move, and we hear it a lot. So we, and we call, in fact, our building official is on, like, I guess what it's, the old listserv with other building officials, they all talk. So if, if someone thinks we're making a weird interpretation of the code, he'll get on there and say, is this right? And they're like, yeah, we do the same thing, even though maybe a contractor's saying, no one else makes me do X, Y, or Z. We can verify that. So it's part of the game. Again, I don't want to be dismissive of that because I'm always curious about what others are doing as well. So we, we try to ground-truth those things, but yeah, that's, that's a common, common approach.
All right. I think this presentation was very useful, and thank you so much. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Kurt, and to your whole team. Thank you.
And we'll be back at 7 o'clock for our council meeting, and at 6:30, we have a reception for Councilmember Fritter. Thank you.